April 7th Regular School Committee Meeting, please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence. Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website at wb-cam.org. First up, we have some recognitions. Mr. Bobo?
All right. The first group, Mrs. Page is going to recognize our Drama Club members for their wonderful performances this weekend.
Thanks. Thank you. I did ask, so this is actually recognition for the Drama Festival that was held at, I believe, Bourne High School, correct? So we were fortunate to have some students who got recognition. I asked Mr. Mail if he could share a few thoughts, he was unable to be here. But so on March 1st, the West Bridgewater Drama Club had an amazing performance of "The Plague Glory" at the Massachusetts Educational Theaters Guild State Theater Festival. Students received rave reviews from the judges and their peers from the other seven schools at the site. I would like to recognize the following students for their awards. When you hear your name, if you could, please come up. Excellence in acting, Luke Doan. Excellence in choreography, Shayla Howard, Braylon Howard, Taylor Ferreira, Grace Goodwin, and Naxla Q. There you go, my dear. And excellence in costume design, Lily Milton and Scarlett Marquez. Congratulations. We'll take a picture. And then, and also, all of these four along with many others, I hope you got, were able to get out this weekend. The Little Mermaid was fantastic. They did an incredible job. The choreography was fabulous. The costumes were amazing. It was just a great, great show. So congratulations.
And I want to second that. I saw it on Friday. You all did a fantastic job. I can only imagine how many hours upon hours upon hours you and your advisors put into it. It showed. It was amazing.
Yeah. I second that. Just absolutely amazing. It went on Saturday afternoon. I loved it. It brought me back to my three girls and watching the movies and stuff. So I just loved the joy and excitement all of you had, and the crowd. The crowd loved it. So, great job.
Congratulations. Hello, everybody. I am Pacheco, one of the West Bridgewater Adult Lions. That's a liaison to our West Bridgewater Howard School Little Leos, along with my friend Mahi Kublis and Kim Keller, who is not here this evening. We are here, along with some of my friends over here that are in the Little Leo, so I'd like to call them up before we start talking more about it. So representing our Little Leos, we have sixth grade students AJ RL, Noelle Gauthier, Ellie Mulcahy, Izzy Pacheco, Cassidy Stewart, Enzo Vera, and Adriana Vaquez. So we are very proud to recognize our Little Leos tonight. The Howard School Club is a rarity, as most Leo Clubs are for the high school students. Not only is our club younger, but they outperformed all other Little Leos in the state and Leo Clubs in the state, raising money for the Massachusetts Lions Eye Research Fund. They have a great time with the penny wars at school. They're running around, collecting a ton of different coins and bills, and figuring it all out, and counting all those bills and coins, and raised quite a bit of money. So, once a month, the Howard School comes together to celebrate one of the pride themes and share our house students. Okay, I guess we'll hold off on that, then. I do believe you said that there was a link in here for their video?
Yes. So I'm thinking, let's take the picture and then we can watch the video, because if we...
Okay. Enzo is going to receive this. This is the William T. Murphy Site Award in recognition of outstanding surface and dedication to the Massachusetts Lions Eye Research Fund Incorporated. We proudly recognize the West Bridgewater Little Leo. So Enzo, if we could accept this for all of our friends?
Sure. I figure we won't have to watch the video for their heads.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Little Leos. In this slide, there is a video that our Little Leos have put together, talking a little bit more about the club.
And I just want, before we start, to say thank you to you and all our Little Leos. I think, how many students are in the club total?
Right now, we're at...
I was going to say sixty-something?
Sixty and above.
That's awesome.
Yes. Last year, we had seventy-five, so quite a bit.
That's great.
They do a lot of hard work at our school.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So if you want to hit that video, then you can say more about it.
Little Leo's Club at the Howard School. Hashtag Leo Talk Tech.
Help our community.
Let seniors have a game day.
And lunch.
We want to contribute kindness with our kindness rock program.
I'll move over the video.
We love making friends and making friends.
We love working together.
We love doing drives and fun amazes, like our Little Leo's Code Tribe or Anton's Code for Kids.
Cleaning up the environment with WB Cleanup Day.
We love making posters to promote our events.
We love to bring our community together with events that's to advances.
We love our annual penny wars, bringing money from the mass and the church club.
We love making a little little leos and minorities.
Little Leo's Club hashtag Leo Talk Tech.
So before we take, we're just going to take a brief recess to excuse those of you who'd like to leave. But before we do that, I just want to say thank you to all of you. Thank you for your service, and keep it up. Don't lose sight of that as you get older, because the community needs more people like you guys.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll take a brief recess. You're all welcome to stay, but if you don't want to, now's the time to go. So... Good job, guys. Oh, yeah, I'm sure I can take that back. I am the one. So next up, we have minutes. Those are going to be held until our next meeting. They're not quite ready yet, so we'll review those and approve them in May. After that, we've got our warrants. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2025. Bill warrants on March 6, 2025, for $176,831.16. March 13, 2025, for $171,321.74. March 20, 2025, for $389,947.44. March 27, 2025, for $177,731.44. And then the following two payroll warrants for fiscal year '25. March 14, 2025, for $652,134.67. And March 28, 2025, for $620,381.81. As always, all warrants are public record and, once signed, are available in the Selectmen's Office for review. We do not have Ms. Craig, our Student Advisory Committee representative, with us tonight. We don't have a student advisory update. Next is public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members shall limit comments to three minutes and are reminded that public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. Personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Okay, seeing none. Moving on to the superintendent's update.
Okay, thank you very much. First, the school choice. Just wanted to provide the committee and the community with a little update on where we are in our school choice enrollment for next year. Our number of applications is strong again. They did close in February, but we are taking late applications this year, giving priority to those that were turned in on time. We have sent out some acceptance letters to students in next year's grades eight through grade twelve, holding off on next year's seventh grade, as the class is about 113 students right now, so we want to wait and see. We want to, again, the goal is to add students where, when appropriate or where appropriate, but not overcrowd any particular grade. We are waiting to hear back from the initial ones that have been sent out, and then dependent on the number of that say yes, we will look at a second round of acceptance letters. At this time, we have closed a few grades based on our current enrollment, and some of the grade levels already being four, having four classrooms. Those are kindergarten, first, and fifth grade. We will continue to look at these, but we sent out letters because we want to make sure people do know and are aware. They've taken the time to apply and done all the information. If we can let them know, I think that's important. Like the past couple years, our elementary grades may only be open to siblings. We were able to take a few siblings, but again, that's going to be very dependent on the current enrollments that we have. Just some, I did some research, got some historical data. Over the last three years, K to six, we've averaged eighty-three school choice students. This year, we're at seventy-two students. The prior four years before that, we averaged about a hundred and four students. So our number of choice students are going down as our West Bridgewater population goes up. And the percentage of elementary choice students was averaging about forty-two percent of our student enrollment, grades K to twelve. Currently, we're at thirty-one percent in the elementary level. So again, the numbers are dropping. It's our goal, we've budgeted for 230 school choice students. We hope we can achieve that goal, but we will not do it if it causes overcrowding in the classrooms.
Just to clarify one question. The closed grades K-1 and 5, is that this year's K-1 and 5, or next year's K-1 and 5?
Next year's K-1 and 5, yep, thank you.
Okay, so this year's K and 4?
Our K and 1, we've budgeted for four teachers, looking at the census data and looking at our current kindergarten enrollment, and our current fourth grade is our largest class, I think around 127, 126, so we've closed that for next year.
How do the number of acceptance letters we've sent out compare to what we've budgeted for for school choice students?
Pretty strong. Our largest grade level is always grade nine, due to students attending the agricultural schools or attending vocational schools. We try to replicate that. The number that go out, we try to add in those students. So we've probably sent out grades eight to twelve, probably about thirty letters so far. Again, kind of doing the rolling admissions. We're still waiting for more information on a lot of people. We just want to make sure we have all the information to make sure they're in a particular grade before we send out acceptances.
Do you have a deadline this fall?
Yes, they have a deadline this week. We will follow up with email and/or phone call to check on things. We know it's still a little bit early for people, so we don't want to rush their decision, but we also want to try to get people locked in. MSBA update. So we did have our second community forum last Tuesday on April 1st. During that meeting, we did review progress from the first community forum that we had. Just a reminder that the building project website is linked on our district website. We do have a meeting tomorrow here at the Mills Senior High School in the Learning Commons at 5:30. Those meetings are always open to the public. They also are taped and shown later on cable. Couple of the big takeaways from the last meeting. We are reviewing the viability of the Howard site. Back in November, the building committee voted to eliminate the Howard site. That was under the belief that we could fit both pre-K to four and pre-K to six at the Rozell site. Due to some issues related to the wetlands, we are having some major concerns of the pre-K to six at the Rozell site due to the need for a wastewater treatment plant. So at this point, it's really, it's a fifty-fifty chance from our architects and designers, so really, we're not willing to really look at a fifty-fifty chance, so it's, that would possibly eliminate it. So that's why we want to look back at the Howard site. Now, we know the Howard site also has its limitations. The location is great because it presents kind of a, you know, a community area, almost like a college campus kind of thing, but it's also, you know, 106 is very busy. It's also a site that has limited opportunity. We already have a septic system there. We would need a wastewater treatment plant fitting that, and you have to build that prior to building the building, and then you can take down the existing building and so forth. So we will look at that. We'll also look at the possibility of a K to six building. This could be done at the Rozell site. It would not require a wastewater treatment plant. It would just be a septic, which would be a cost savings. Obviously, that would leave out pre-K. Pre-K could be, still remain at Spring Street. It could take over the kindergarten wing. Potentially, Central Office could stay at Spring Street. There could be possibilities of moving both pre-K and Central Office over to the Howard site. Renovations would be needed. Those decisions are not really related to the building project in terms of the school building committee, but they would be town decisions. There's a lot of benefits, I think, to a K to six school. You know, leaving one group out is not ideal, but preschool is a little bit different than our full-day programs. Those will both be discussed in depth tomorrow at the meeting.
And I think an important thing to point out is that the risk that you talked about, the fifty-fifty chance, is that the State Department, which would have to permit our wastewater treatment plant, would only let us know that we would not be able to move forward with the project after a town vote to approve the school. So we would be in a very difficult position then. Going with a septic system is approved locally, and it's much lower risk.
Yes, good distinction between the two. And, you know, it's not just the timing, it's also the cost, the permitting costs. We're talking, you know, close to probably millions of dollars that would go into it and maybe not get an approval by DEP.
Question mark. I thought about it after you had told me about this in the first place. What was like the threshold difference? It's surprising to me a little bit after I digested the information, that just removing pre-K was enough for it to be okay. So like, what was that threshold of, you know, per student?
Sure. Good question. We were slightly over with pre-K to six. We would be under it due to we are predicting seventy-five students in preschool plus associated staff.
And that's counting for, in the future, the growth of the older grades? Because that was something...
Correct, yes.
When I was like, wait, if we take preschool out, like, but then the town grows, are we still under that threshold?
Right. That is all in the numbers, the MSBA projected enrollment. So they are projected pre-K to six of 1,075 students. That's K to six. The pre-K is an additional seventy-five.
Additional seventy-five, okay.
And then we'd have to add in staff. So we've given them numbers for staff for both pre-K to four and pre-K to six, that they've worked into the numbers and calculations for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions, though.
Could you do pre-K and K, or is it like busing and timing and stuff? Like, would you take the K out of the, and leave Rozell site as one through six, then have Howard be pre-K and K?
You could do that, yep.
You're allowed to configure any way you want.
That's not something we've talked about as a committee yet, but it's something that could be brought up.
And you get the buses and stuff, I know there's...
Yeah.
And I think the difficulty that we face right now at the Spring Street School with crowding and running out of space, kind of make that an unappealing option, because we do want to do something to relieve that crowding there.
Right. And again, that's been, you know, the biggest issue has been our overcrowding. The other biggest issue is our buildings are old. 1958, 1956. Howard is 1958, but it was redone in 1993, so it's a little bit newer. I think Rozell was actually the newest of the buildings in 1968, but still, older buildings, but the bigger issue is, again, we've said it before, but we can fit five classrooms per grade, we just can't go to the six. And the projected enrollment is going six, if not maybe some of the classes would have seven classrooms per grade. And again, this isn't in the next five years or ten years, but it's over the lifespan of the school. So the school building committee will be the committee that votes on the preferred grade configuration, whether that's pre-K to four, pre-K to six, K to six, and they'll also look at, will it be renovation addition or will it be new construction? So all the information we've presented tomorrow night, and there's a potential to have a vote tomorrow night if the committee feels they have enough information. If not, we're going to wait until we feel we have enough information to move forward. And then some timelines down the road. The preferred schematic report, PSR, is due on May 1st to the MSBA. If for some reason we can't meet that deadline, then there'll be a future MSBA deadline that we'll have to meet. And the schematic design portion will go from hopefully May through October 2025, which is about six months, with looking ahead to hopefully a town meeting and town vote presumably December or January of next school year. A budget update. So on May, excuse me, March 10th, the school committee approved the FY '26 budget with a 5.83% increase over FY '25. We did make presentations to the Board of Selectmen on March 19th and the Finance Committee on March 20th. I thought both went well. I think both committees asked some very good questions. Again, we appreciate their support. Both presentations are available on our district website, so if people haven't had a chance to look at the information, they can review it there, and they can certainly reach out with any questions they may have. The budget has been reviewed by the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee at recent meetings, and they voted to move the school committee budget as presented to town meeting, which will be on May 12th. And REEDS, the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, just providing a little bit more of an update as they have at past meetings, but the REEDS Collaborative is looking to purchase a building in Norton for their program. It is a good location, locating on the main street in Norton, close to, I think it's just over a mile maybe from one of the elementary schools, just down the street from the middle school and the high school and another elementary school. I am a member of the Facility Subcommittee Meeting. We've held meetings and we've done a walkthrough of the facility. The Subcommittee does have a meeting scheduled again for tomorrow. Information has been provided in your packets, including frequently asked questions. There will be no change to West Bridgewater or our district budget, because we have no students attending there, but there is an increase for districts that do have students attending. But the alternative, I think, is possibly more expensive. We need to find other programs that may be further away, and we've got a great program, the Deaf and Hard of Hearing is a great program, well-respected program, and they have a great collaboration with the Norton Public Schools. And the board, which is made up of the superintendents, will vote in an upcoming meeting. But again, we're all bringing it to our school committees to ask any questions or concerns with it, and I can bring those forward. All good, all right. And Howard trustees, I just want to put up on the screen the places that the Howard trustees have provided support to our students, staff, and programs. Last two years, they've spent over about almost $30,000 in school programs. You're going to see them listed there. And one of the other major functions they have are scholarships for our graduating seniors, and they've given out over $31,000 per year in student scholarships. So just a huge thank you to a group of individuals who work very hard, and they're always giving back. And I think our, I know our administrators and our staff and our students appreciate what they've done. Wildcat Pride Assembly. This is Jufree.
So every month, the Howard School comes together as a school community to celebrate the Wildcat Pride, a Wildcat Pride theme of the month. And students from each grade share what they've done that month to explore that particular theme, and then we announce the theme for the next year. It's sort of developed into its own, if you want to, Mr. Bobo, if you click on that, the thing that says the formula?
Yes.
It links you to a typical slideshow. So the kids get together in the gym, and we work our way through these slides. So this is the most basic one I could find, like, and then if you, you don't have to do this, but what I would do in the assembly is click on fourth grade. That opens up the fourth grade slides. Fourth graders come up, talk about what they've done, they get their recognition, and then you work your way down, fifth grade, sixth grade. Sixth grade always does a writing prompt, and so we put the prompts on the screen, and the kids, so there are always three sixth graders who come up and speak. Their, what they wrote is there for kids to read, and they hear it, and then we announce the theme for the next month. It's a well-oiled machine at this part, at this point, and one of the things that I love the most about it is it is almost entirely student-led, the assembly itself. The work behind it happens in the classrooms throughout the course of the month, but the assembly itself, I write a script, I have a tech team, I have kiddos who come and set up my projector and speakers and microphone. I have two sixth grade boys who are my emcees, and they run the whole show. Fourth grade is in charge of clicking through the slides. We have kids in the audience who are sort of plants with tickets, so they can reward positive behavior with tickets in the crowd. And I literally, once I get them in and settle down...
who work very hard, and they're always giving back. And I think our, I know our administrators and our staff and our students appreciate what they've done. Wildcat Pride Assembly. This is Jufree.
So every month, the Howard School comes together as a school community to celebrate the Wildcat Pride, a Wildcat Pride theme of the month. And students from each grade share what they've done that month to explore that particular theme, and then we announce the theme for the next year. It's sort of developed into its own. If you want to, Mr. Baldwin, if you click on that, the thing that says the formula-
Yes.
It links you to a typical slideshow. So the kids get together in the gym and we work our way through these slides. So this is the most basic one I could find, like, and then if you, you don't have to do this, but what I would do in the assembly is click on fourth grade. That opens up the fourth grade slides. Fourth graders come up, talk about what they've done, they get their recognition, and then you work your way down, fifth grade, sixth grade. Sixth grade always does a writing prompt, and so we put the prompts on the screen and the kids, so there are always three sixth graders who come up and speak. They're, what they wrote is there for kids to read and they hear it. And then we announce the theme for the next month. It's a well-oiled machine at this part, at this point. And one of the things that I love the most about it is it is almost entirely student-led, the assembly itself. The work behind it happens in the classroom, classrooms throughout the course of the month, but the assembly itself, I write a script, I have a tech team, I have kiddos who come and set up my projector and speakers and microphone. I have two sixth grade boys who are my emcees, and they run the whole show. Fourth grade is in charge of clicking through the slides. We have kids in the, in the audience who are sort of plants with tickets, so they can reward positive behavior with tickets in the crowd. And I literally, once I get them in and settle down, I hand the microphone off to the emcees and I'm in the crowd with everybody else. The kids take it from there, and then I go back up at the beginning, at the end, and dismiss them. But it is almost entirely student-led, and it's so super fun. Somewhere in there, maybe student-involved, so one thing they will say is, oh, I didn't share it. Oh, man, that's such a bummer. One thing that they will say is that I do write really cheesy scripts. So that was just going to be a sample of one of my cheesy scripts. But the teachers do a phenomenal job throughout the course of the year, embedding the lessons for the theme of the month. The students love to have their moment in the spotlight. And now what's fun is now they're vying, they're trying to, we're doing some auditions and trying out some guest emcees, because they want to know who's going to emcee next year. So that's been really fun. And I'm thinking next year, we'll have the fourth grade continue to advance the slides, we'll have fifth grade be the tech, and then they can kind of, each grade will have their jobs. So fifth grade will be the tech team, sixth grade will be the emcees. But we'll see how it goes. It's really what the kids want to do, but they do a phenomenal job.
That's awesome. Well, thank you. And I've seen one of them last year. It's fun, it's engaging, the kids seem to be really into it.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of fun. So please, we have one to Wednesday at eight-thirty. If any of you are interested, come on by. You know, if ever you want to come see one, let me know, I'll send you the dates, but we love to have visitors. And that is, what I showed was a very, very basic. We do have high school students come and speak to us. We had some students come to do disability awareness. We've had students do presentations on things that matter to them in our school. We've had the American Heart Association come and talk about Jump Rope for Life. We've had Unified Sports come to recruit students for basketball. So it's our time to talk about any other stuff. So what you saw is like the base model, and then we kind of add to it as needed.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mrs. Page.
So I am doing a sports update for Ms. Hamel. She was unable to be with us. It definitely will not be as energetic as she would normally present, because I don't think anybody can match her, whatever that is, because she's fabulous. So we are proud to share that our school was recognized for its participation in Unified Sports on Friday, March twenty-first. The Middle Senior High School was honored with the National Banner of Recognition for the Special Olympics North America, a prestigious award celebrating our commitment to fostering an inclusive and respectful school environment where everyone feels valued. We were also excited to host the Middle School Unified Basketball Jamboree, bringing together teams from West Bridgewater, Westport, and Dartmouths for an incredible day of competition, sportsmanship, and inclusion. The energy in the gym was contagious, with athletes showcasing their skills, teamwork, and enthusiasm. It was truly a great day for all involved, celebrating the power of Unified Sports to bring communities together. Thank you to everyone who participated and supported this fantastic event. And I just want to kind of stop there real quick and just make sure that I recognize Jen Hamel and Nikki Maloney and Jenny Kaylee for all they did for Unified Sports. It was a great year. They worked really hard, and it's getting bigger each year, so kudos to them.
Mrs. Page, that event was awesome. It was awesome. Had the sixth graders come over-
Yeah.
And then have the basketball game against the faculty team. And I tell you, they hit that first basket, and you would think it was the NBA Finals. It was awesome, and the kids just had a lot of fun, so.
No, it was great. It was great to lift them up. The South Coast Conference recently organized a leadership conference for freshman and sophomore athletes, providing them with the valuable opportunity to grow as leaders both on and off the field. Hosted at the Fairhaven Recreation Center and led by MIAA representatives, the workshop focused on leadership development, teamwork, and personal growth. It was an inspiring day filled with insightful discussions and activities which empowered our student athletes to be positive role models in their schools and communities. WB was able to take ten student athletes to attend. As we wrap up our winter sports season, we want to recognize our outstanding athletes who have earned South Coast Conference All-Star Honorable Mentions and Sportsmanship Awards. These students will be recognized at the Athletic Awards Night in June. For Boys Basketball, Jay Garces. For Girls Basketball, Alyssa Caldera, Alyssa Caldera, sorry. For Boys Winter Track, Alex Kelly. South Coast Conference Honorable Mentions for Boys Basketball, Ben Stapleton and Brendan Hume. Girls Basketball, Sammy O'Neil and Grace Poland. Girls Winter Track, Kate Osrino and Chloe Gothier. Boys Winter Track, Jude Tate and Jason Gothage. South Coast Conference Sportsmanship Award winners, Boys Basketball, Jay Garces. Girls Basketball, Jill Bouvier. Boys Winter Track, Achilles Gomez. And Girls Winter Track, Alana Fidalgo. We also celebrate the Webb Boys Ice Hockey Team for earning the South Shore League Team Sportsmanship Award for the third consecutive year. Special recognition goes to Brayden Bates for being named South Shore League All-Star. The West Bridgewater Chair Team showcased their talent at the MSAA Winter Chair Leading South Shore Regional Championship on March second at Framingham High School. They worked hard and did a fantastic job. In impressive performance, the Bridgewater Rainham and West Bridgewater Gymnastics Co-op Team captured the Cranberry League Championship and went on to compete in the MIAA State Championship at Algonquin Regional High School. They finished seventh in the state. A huge congratulations to all of our winter sport athletes and coaches. Thank you to our amazing fans for all your support throughout the season. With the arrival of, it says warmer weather, but I'm still waiting on that, we're thrilled to kick off our spring sports season. Our Wildcats are ready to hit the courts, fields, and track as they compete in girls' and boys tennis, baseball, softball, girls' and boys' spring track and field, and unified cornhole. We can't wait to see our athletes showcase their hard work, dedication, and team spirit throughout the spring season. Good luck to all of our teams. Stay tuned for updates and highlights on WB Athletics Twitter. You can also find schedules on the Arbiter Live website. Please add to your calendar that the WB Athletics Award Night will be held on Monday, June second at six P.M. in the gymnasium. And finally, save the date, on May first, from four to six P.M. in the high school gym, Middle Senior High School gym, West Bridgewater Athletics, in partnership with No Solo, is hosting a special fundraising event focused on mental health awareness. Coaches and student athletes will be actively participating, helping to raise awareness and support for this important cause. We hope to see you there for an evening of community engagement and advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Giannis for Academic Technology and Finite Showcase.
So this year will hold our Academic Technology and Finite Showcase on Thursday, May eighth, from five-thirty to six-thirty, right here at the Middle Senior High School. It's great to have this event. We see so much that the students have done and the teachers have done throughout the year, and it's great to showcase that work. Some of the things we've had in the past, Mrs. Brogna had her bugs down there last year. It's great to see the kindergarteners. They get a little antsy after a certain amount of time, so we're trying to condense it a little bit this year. But it's a night to celebrate education and success and everything great that goes on in the district. So I hope everyone joins us, because you will be impressed.
It's open to anyone, anyone in the community.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
And RMP will have a table there as well this year.
Awesome. All right. This is Marvin, Mrs. Giannis for our Integrated Modern Review Report.
All right, so as you know, we went through what's called the Tiered Focus Monitoring this year. It's been referred to a couple of other things in the years past, but that's what we're calling it now. I think it's important to talk about Cycle A and Cycle B. There's two cycles. We had Cycle B this year. Cycle A was about four years ago, and it's supposed to run every three years. So Cycle A, then Cycle B, then Cycle A, then Cycle B. The reason why it took us four years is because something was going on at the high school, I think he asked, so they asked us to bump it back a year. So they look at different, Cycle A looks more at like timelines for special education processes. They spend the day in my office looking at files. They don't really go out and look at the district or interview anyone. Cycle B, the onsite visit is more interviews with like CPAC chair, admin, a couple of teachers, and they look at spaces in the buildings. Important dates to note, we found out that we were going to be Cycle B back in June. We got an email. Over the summer, we did a couple of virtual meetings with Desi. Winnie Coco was our person, phenomenal, great. She helped us through a lot of this. So she met with us over the summer. We started uploading a lot of the self-assessment, a lot of the paperwork they wanted. That had to be uploaded by September twentieth, and then the onsite visit happened on December sixteenth. They reviewed all the documentation, and on their onsite visit, they, like I said, interviewed admin and CPAC. They were mainly interested in like our comming rooms, our comming spaces. They were interested in knowing what they looked like, where they were at, where our classrooms were located, where our special ed pullout services, like our speech and language-related services, our resource rooms, our sub-separates. They just wanted to know where all that was related to regular ed, make sure that we were okay there. I think it's important to note that for Cycle A, there was, it was primarily special education. I want to say there were maybe eighteen criterias, and there were only three criterias for civil rights. This one a little flip-flopped. There were eleven criteria for special education and eighteen for civil rights. So it was heavily on civil rights for the B portion. It also included parent surveys and a virtual orientation meeting for parents, which Cycle A did too, but Cycle B was more about the surveys. That was in November. Let's see, the final report, we got on March thirty, March twentieth. Deb and I had met with Winnie a couple of times after we got the report. We met with the admin team, the principals, Mark, made sure everyone was on board and we knew what we were doing. Our corrective action, which is referred to as the CAP, was due by April seventeenth, but we got right on it, and we submitted that on Friday, and Winnie okayed it. Woo-hoo, excited about that one. So we have six areas that we have to work on. One of them, one of which I'll be asking a little bit for you to approve, the restraint, the physical restraint. So the next steps, I've shared the corrective action plan. I hope you were all able to open it. I got yours, Robin, that you weren't able to open it, so I gave you permission. I hope everyone-
I didn't know what it was until you just said that.
So that kind of outlines the dates that everything is due. So we'll be asking for you to approve like the handbook, the bullying, the code of conduct, things that we have to. A lot of it was just tweaking, adding some verbiage, things like that. We do have a training that we need to, the admin team's going to go through. I've emailed Winnie to find out when and how we set that up for CR twenty-five. That's the evaluation for the district. Any specific questions?
Can you give us just a kind of a general, I mean, you don't have to get into the minutia of the CAP, but just so that we kind of have an idea, because I know some of the, some of the corrective actions will involve looking at the policies and whatnot. So can you give us just kind of a general idea of what each finding was? I have, I happen to have it open, so.
It knows, that's fine. So for CR ten A, which was the student handbooks and the code of conduct, I'll have to kind of read it right from it, only because I don't know it from memory. A lot of words, yeah, hold on. So I believe this is when the re- engagement, for some reason, and I feel like we did have re-engagement in the handbook, chime in if I don't say it right, but we did have re-engagement procedures in the handbook, but they wanted it to be worded differently. Did I get that right? That was for ten A. Did you want me to go through the corrective action steps, or do you want me just talk about what it was they? Because then we, so what happened was they tell us what we need to do-
What we need to do.
And then we did a root cause analysis to figure out how this happened, and then that came up with these corrective action steps. So for this one, which I know the principals have already worked on the handbook, and I actually have it ready to submit to Winnie to make sure that it aligns with what she wants, because for the TFM, we resubmitted quite a few things, and we thought we had it right the first, second, third time. And obviously, we didn't have it right, because we have a corrective action that we have to do. So before we submit it to you, we want to make sure that she says, yeah, you're good. So I know the principals worked on it, so we're in that process to do that one for the handbook. And then ten B is the bullying intervention and prevention plan. So let me see what this one was. What was that? Oh, the language. So we thought that we had the word staff in there, but it wasn't in there as a possible aggressor. So we had to, we have to add the word staff. Sounds like a simple thing. Was there another one?
Some of the protective groups, I think.
Oh, yeah, the protective groups, the protective groups have changed over the years, so we had to add some more verbiage along that. And then for any of these, we need to train the staff on it, obviously, show that we've trained them on the bullying plan. I think that was it for that one. Student discipline, do you remember that one?
That was about notifying parent, the due process. So it was in there, but we just expanded, so now it's within the, you know, Massachusetts General Law and the letters, but we just kind of used it, so it's now it's-
I think we had links prior, that people could click on.
Oh, yeah, we had the link in there, but we, under the link, and wrote it all. So it was, you know, different, it was really verbiage. And we need to establish a formal review process on updating those procedures. So we've talked about it as an admin team and make sure we get these on our monthly meetings. Yes. And then the physical restraint. I mistakenly was using the word procedure in policy, and it's procedures we're talking about. We're not talking about the policy that you guys have created, developed, and presented. And we've always had safety care procedures. We've had safety care now, I think, for seven years, maybe, six or seven, instead of CPI. And our safety care procedures were nothing compared to what the restraint procedures are that they wanted. And I found that out by collaborating with my colleagues in other districts, working with the BCBA, which is what you guys have in your folders for in a couple of minutes, hopefully. So that was one of them. I had submitted it to Winnie, she okayed it, but she knows we're waiting for school committee approval. And then curriculum review, I don't know, Deb, if you want to talk about that one.
So we had done a lot with reviewing curriculum. We did a lot when we adopted our new curriculum. But what we need to do is balance stereotypes and anti-bias within what we're, what supplemental materials are being used. So in order to do that, we had to create a checklist that the teachers, the high school teachers received. They've done some, some of them have already turned theirs in, but I didn't have that data in time. So that didn't get uploaded to Winnie in time. So they're coming in now, and then we'll have to do more, we'll have to lower that to the elementary schools. And we're going to have training, as soon as I can get my video to work, we'll have training on that. The specialists have it, they've uploaded some of their documents to me. So we've done a lot with cultural responsiveness, responsiveness and incorporating everyone into the picture, but we just haven't uploaded the data.
Do they have, I remember having to do this, I think, last year or something in my own district. Do, so do you have, I don't know, like a video or guidelines or whatnot for the staff as they're reviewing their materials?
We do now.
Okay.
Yep. And I had reached out to my colleagues in anticipation of the audit, and they had shared what they had used. And things have changed over time, so Desi's looking for more and more. So when my colleagues in Marshfield did this, they were okay just uploading the documents. So now they want the actual data.
And then the last one was an institutional self-evaluation that focuses on the comprehensive equity, a comprehensive equity review of our K through twelve programming. I know that we uploaded all the surveys that Mark has done. There was actually a form, I don't know if we even named it, but there was a form- but there was a form that we, um, sent out to the teachers and to the, um, coordinators to have them fill it out. But what we did was not enough.
And also out to families as well.
Yes, into the families, that's correct. Um, so we'll, we'll know more of what they want on this one, once we engage in that Desi training. Um, and that's, that's about it.
And throughout the whole process, Winnie has told us, you know, everybody's learning at the same time, and these were not things that we weren't doing, we just needed to tweak them more.
Yeah, Winnie was great to work with.
She was amazing.
I think we found that we had a lot of, of the items they needed, but they weren't always in the right place. And they weren't always accessible, um, to the public. So we want to make sure we're getting them in locations that are easy to find and people can review. And we're happy that, you know, we had no findings for special education. And again, we, we expected some findings in civil rights. And it's our mission to make sure we accomplish all we need to do for the corrective action plan.
Yeah.
I also want to thank-
Part of the corrective action, sorry, Mark.
No, it's one-
Part of it will be, um, you know, to consistently review these things that were being, um, not cited on, but that are being called to our attention, that we have to do better at. So, um, I think as an admin team, that's what our plan is.
No district is perfect. I mean, if this came back with absolutely no findings, I think I'd be concerned. So, you know, I'm always happy, I, I always want us to get in and look at what can we do better, so.
Right, and we're always trying to improve. And we asked Winnie.
We did ask how we get to that top tier, because we were a little bit, how come we only got implemented? But, um, yeah, she said not to share her response. No kidding. She doesn't see it ever, is what she said. Implemented is the top, the top you can get, I guess.
I would thank both of you for spearheading this and also our administrative team for all their hard work, and all, and all staff. Again, it's a, it's a learning process for us, but takes a lot of hard work. From when you find out in the summer, to preparing for the meeting, preparing documentation, to uploading things, to all the way through April, we're talking nearly a, a year of hard work.
And kudos to actually Jean Carsey. I was out in the beginning of the year, and although we uploaded most, if not a, a lot of special ed, at least before I, um, was out, she definitely gathered additional paperwork that we needed to upload before that deadline. So kudos to Jean.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? No? I'm just going to hang up here, because I think I'm next.
No, don't go far.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, so that brings us, we don't have any unfinished business, but that brings us to new business. So right, um, at the top, we have a homeschool request to approve. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, so we did get another homeschool request. I have reviewed it, and it does align with the school committee's policy. So I would recommend that you approve it.
Okay. Um, move to accept the homeschool request, um, as written in our folder. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussions, any questions? No? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, next, the restraint procedures.
So this is the physical restraint procedures that, um, was part of the TFM, um, process. Um, I know you guys all have it. Um, it pretty much just talks about de-escalating techniques, um, processes that we would use if we do need to use, um, physical restraint. That is not what our first go-to is, um, but it needs to be on file as what it would look like if we had to. So hoping that you approve it.
Um, I guess, so, and also for everyone's reference, our, um, in our folder, for, under the policies for review and policies for reference is our physical restraint of students policy. Um, and I just kind of glanced at both of them. Um, so I guess my question would be, um, how did you write the procedures? What, what resources did you use?
I used my colleagues and other districts for sure. I used our BCBA.
Yep.
Um, and that was really all I had. Um, you know, I did speak with, um, some of the principals that are using, um, that are more apt to maybe have to restrain, um, in their buildings. And I got whatever I could from them, and I put this together.
So I just have the policy up, and I'm just going to run through the bullet, um, the bullet points.
Just, uh, we may have a wifi issue at seven o'clock. It may be going down, so I want to just alert, uh, people watching that we may lose wifi. It hopefully gets delayed until eight o'clock. I don't want people to wonder why we cut out. If possible, we cut out, so.
All right. Um, so I just wanted to go through the bullet points in our, um,
Policy.
Our, our policy, just to make sure they're all in there. Um, so appropriate responses to student behavior that may require immediate intervention. I saw those in there.
I feel that's in there.
Yep. Um, methods of preventing student violence, self-injurious behavior, and suicide, including crisis planning and de-escalation of potentially dangerous behaviors among groups of students or individuals.
Yep.
Yep, I saw it on there too. Descriptions and explanations of alternatives to physical restraint, as well as the school's method of physical restraint for use in emergency situations.
Yep.
Descriptions of the school's training and procedures to comply with reporting requirements, including but not limited to making reasonable efforts to orally notify a parent guardian of the use of restraint within 24 hours of its imposition.
Yes.
Okay. Procedures for reviewing, I'm sorry, procedures for receiving and investigating complaints.
Yes.
Methods for engaging parent guardians in discussions about restraint prevention and use of restraint solely as an emergency procedure.
Yes.
And then a statement prohibiting medication restraint, mechanical restraint, prone restraint, unless permitted, um, by 603 CMR, 4603, seclusion, and the use of physical restraint in a manner inconsistent with the regulations.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and then the last one, a process for obtaining principal approval for a timeout exceeding 30 minutes.
Yes, that's in there.
Does anyone else have any questions about the restraint procedures? No? Okay. Um, move to accept the restraint procedures as written. Um, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. So the next order of business is Mr. Bodwell's annual appointment to North, North River Collaborative and Reed's Collaborative. Um, so pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors at Reed's Collaborative are to be appointed annually. So I move that Mark Bodwell is appointed to serve as the West Bridgewater Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, for the 2025, 2026 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? No? All in favor? Aye. So moved, and we have one more. Um, pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors at North River Collaborative are to be appointed annually. Um, I move Mark Bodwell is, or be appointed to serve as the West Bridgewater Public Schools representative on the Board of Directors of North River, River Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, for the 2025, 2026 school year. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye. So moved. Okay. Our next order of business is the superintendent evaluation dates. Um, so looking at the calendar, and I know, well, you guys are going to be participating, whether you're here or not, and you're, and, and you're coming back. You can't stop coming back, um, for Mr. Bodwell's evaluation. Um, so looking at the calendar, and then looking at Mr. Bodwell's contract, which has some of the dates in it. Um, I'm proposing that we have Mr. Bodwell get his evidence to the committee by, um, May 5th, which I believe is our next meeting date, right? Um, and then two weeks after that, so on May 19th, individual evaluations be completed. Does that sound feasible to you all? After evidence to have the evals done within two weeks?
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, the chair at the time, whether it's me or somebody else, will compi, um, compile, compile those individual evaluations into a summary, send them back for review to you all, and then, um, get them over to Mr. Bodwell by 5:26. So that's a week in between. Sound good?
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, we will review an open meeting in our June meeting, um, which is June 2nd. So all of those dates sound good to everybody?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, move to accept the following dates for the superintendent evaluation. Um, evidence to the committee on May 5th, uh, individual evaluations to the chair for May 19th, um, the summary of evaluations to the superintendent for May 26th, and then review an open meeting on June 2nd. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So moved. Okay, Mr. Schmier, CPAC update.
The mission of West Bridgewater's Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. We do this by supporting families of students with IUPs and 504s and including regular education parents in our pursuit for equity and inclusion. April is Autism Acceptance Month. Autism is a neurological variation. This means that brains of autistic people work differently than the brains of autistic or non-autistic people. Not lesser, just different. Last week, each school participated in a spirit week in celebration of our differences. We hope students had fun celebrating while learning a few new things about neurodivergence and our autistic community. Spring is one of our favorite times of year, as it is a time that we recognize and appreciate the educators who do so much for our children. In a few short weeks, the WBC PAC will award our sixth annual Grant of Gratitude to a deserving West Bridgewater teacher, therapist, staff person, or administrator in recognition of their inclusive efforts in the classroom, school, or district. We need your help. Tell us who should be celebrated for going above and beyond in fostering an inclusive classroom. Visit our Facebook page for more details, or submit your nomination at big.ly/grantofgratitude by this Friday, April 11th. As a reminder, our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 15th, here at the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. We encourage parents and caregivers to join us. In the words of Temple Grandin, "The world needs all kinds of minds." For more information about Inclusion Matters and our upcoming events, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA, or by emailing us at wbcpac@gmail.com.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, uh, moving on to report of committees. Uh, we do not have a student representative tonight, so moving down to the policy subcommittee. We do have some policies open to approve, and a couple of more that we're going to hold for a little bit. Um, so move to adopt the following policies as written. JL, Student Welfare, and IMGA, Service Animals in School. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yep, so IMGA, we accidentally reopened in error. We had already reviewed that in March 2025, so we are closing that one again. Um, and JL, Student Welfare, so it's just some background. Um, our town officials had partnered with our, um, insurance carrier to review our insurance portfolio. And there was an audit done of that. And in that audit, there was a takeaway from the findings that, um, impacted the schools. And it was recommended that the language, um, that there be language added to our policies to discourage one-on-one staff and student interaction. So, um, our administration, um, had reviewed our faculty handbooks, and also, um, we're adding language to policy JL. And the language that is in the, um, shared location that you can see in red, um, is policy is, um, language that was added per advice of our district's attorney, uh, our district's attorney, um, in response to the risk control assessment that had been performed. And the language that was, that is in purple is a sample of, um, policy, sample of policy, um, language that was provided, um, by the risk assessment entity. Let me take a look at those.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay. Um, all in favor? Aye. So moved. Okay. Um, move to rescind the following policies as written. IGC, Establishing New Courses and Programs of Studies, and IGC-R, Procedure for Implementing New Courses. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
So, um, both the, both of these policies are no longer on the MS, MASC index. Um, the content of, um, within each of these can now be found within policies IGA/IGD, Curriculum Development and Adoption, which we had adopted in our January 2025 meeting. And prior to that, IDA and IDG had been standalone, and then they had been combined.
Any questions on those?
Very straightforward.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we're going to move to hold the following policies. JICFB, Bullying Prevention, JIC, Student Discipline, and JKAA, Physical Restraint of Students. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, so these, we had opened last month, um, in response to the TFM, and then we will probably close them next month, once we've kind of looked at everything and made sure that the policies align with, um, the action plan and whatnot. Any further discussion or questions?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, that's, I think that's it for policies. We do have the AC policies still on hold. We're going to keep those on hold and keep them open so that we can revise them once guidance comes down from MASC.
Okay. I'm just going to say for the record, I was hoping that we would have no policies discussed.
Yeah. But we do.
But we did.
So. Um, okay, other subcommittees. Um, let's see, so for personnel, I don't think you guys have an update, right? No update quite yet, or?
No, no update yet.
Nothing to share publicly.
Nope. Okay. Um, but with you both, well, with Mrs. Milton leaving us, and Mr. Schmier potentially, um, leaving or not, um, you both are on the Personnel Subcommittee. So we should probably appoint an alternate, so that because negotiations are currently in progress, somebody is able to carry the torch, um, past the election. Um, so is there, are there any takers on?
There's only two of you that can speak.
So, yes, I am willing to serve on.
Yeah, and I know it was the advice of the attorney that I not serve. Um, simply because I am, I'm a member of the MTA. I'm not a member of the WBEA. Obviously, I could not be on the school committee if I were. Um, but I am in a teachers' union in a neighboring district, so, um, so I'm going to move to appoint Carol Lizardi as our alternate on the Personnel and Negotiations Subcommittee. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, all right, so.
Question though.
Sure.
Are we going to keep it for them, the ones meeting this week, the two of them? Or should we do a swap for this coming meeting, so that it's not like?
Because we can't all three attend because of the quorum.
Hmm.
Not that I'm in a hurry.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's some, it, I think it makes more sense if I step back.
Yeah.
Not that I'm looking to get out of any duties, but I think with Dave, but I'm almost out.
Yeah.
But, no, but I mean, Dave may be here next, next.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
I'm just, in case, so that way it's not completely abrupt, like, oh, now you have an entirely new.
And then in May, the subcommittees will be reorganized anyway.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, okay, any other questions?
Unless Mr. Bodwell, or anyone, does anybody feel differently, or is there?
I mean, I can, I can certainly, you can attend, I can update you. I don't know if we want continuity going in.
Yeah, that's why I figured we should talk about it.
We're, we're getting hopefully close. Uh, we've had good meetings with Doug BEA. Um, I don't know if it makes sense, and I, I appreciate you wanting to be there. I don't know if continuity will help us maybe move forward? Is it something that we can, um, I'm open to?
I think continuity, I think we need to, I think, I'm drawing another meeting.
I'm fine, I'm planning on going, I was planning, so.
But, uh, you know, certainly between now and then, we can sidebar. We can bring you in with our internal group, and as well as our attorney, so you have all that information.
That's fine, okay.
That makes sense.
That works.
Okay, that brings us to questions or recommendations by the committee. So one thing I did make a note on is our Monday, see, I wrote down the athletics awards, as I was supposed to. Um, on Monday, 6/2 at 6:00 PM is our June meeting, but that conflicts with the athletic awards. Um, so I'm going to propose now that we move it to five. Um, but we should discuss it at the next meeting and officially vote next meeting, um, given a full, having a full committee here. Does that make sense to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then one last final thing that I would like to do, I think we'd all like to do, is recognize Mrs. Milton for being on the committee the last three years. So as we all know, she is not running, and so she will not be with us in May. But I would like to thank you for, so I got you a sparkly notebook, because if you guys know Mrs. Milton, she does write down absolutely everything.
Thanks, Robyn.
She's constantly recording things in her notebook. And we would also like to thank you for your service.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm gonna miss her. I'm absolutely gonna miss her. I don't know who's gonna keep our folder in order and everything, so.
I do like to organize. Thank you, thank you all. It's been honestly my honor to, to serve. You know, unfortunately, I made the decision not to run this time, just because I, my professional situation's changed within the last year. Had to go back to work. And it's, you know, it's something needed to give, and I needed to take a step back. But I'm very actively involved in many things still within the school district, and will be lurking around, I'm sure, attending coffee hours and, and giving feedback where I can. But, you know, not closing the door, but, you know, it's just, you know, because, because I've really enjoyed this. So I came into this with no agenda, nothing, you know, nothing to gain other than just knowledge and understanding how everything worked. And I appreciate everybody's patience with me, as I've asked questions over the past three years. So, thank you. It's been a pleasure. Good luck, Mr. Schmier.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure serving with you. Three years now, we've been together on the committee. We started together, and hopefully, we don't finish together. Thank you for all your work. I think all the different things that you're involved in show that you're a dedicated member of the community. And I think that's a mark of a very valuable person to have by our side.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I want to thank you. I mean, your, your work on negotiations, certainly policies, member of the Safe Schools Committee, given that parent and school committee perspective was always important. Your attendance, our coffee, my coffee hours have been excellent. You're involved with drama. And bottom line, your true care and compassion for the kids and the staff and the community. So it's, it's all very much appreciated. Thank you for your time. I've always said that, you know, this, you're not getting paid to do this, you are doing this to, and to help our, our school community be better. So thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or recommendations for the committee before we move on? No. Okay, our next regular school committee meeting date is May 5th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, here in the Middle-Senior High School Learning Commons. So I am going to move to adjourn the regular meeting and enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the West Bridgewater Education Association pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, and to not reconvene in open session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, so we will do a roll call vote on this. Well, actually, is there any discussion on that? I don't think we need to. Okay. Mrs. Lazardi?
Yes.
Mr. Schmier?
Yes.
Mrs. Milton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dragonetti? Yes. All right. Have a good night, everyone.